All right, this is a workshop meeting of the Borough of Bloomingdale, June 11, 2024. I'm going to call the committees who are in the room. We'll just loop to the flesh.
I am a president to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Roll call.
Mayor Demato.
Here.
Councilman Catalano.
Here.
Councilwoman De La Riva.
Here.
Councilwoman Graziano.
Here.
Councilwoman Hudson.
Here.
Councilwoman Schubert.
Here.
Councilwoman Yasi.
Here.
Okay, we also have our municipal clerk with us, Brianna Smith. This is Administrator Michael Sondermeier, Borough Attorney, Doran Sullivan. This is a meeting called the Presumption of the Provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. Adequate notice that this meeting was advertised in the Herald News on January 12, 2024. Copies were provided to the local news media and posted continuously in the municipal building. A copy of this notice is available to the public and is on file in the office of Municipal Clerk. As per state fire code, I am required to acknowledge that there are two emergency exits in this council chamber. The main entrance, which you entered through, and a secondary exit to the left of where I am seated. If there is an emergency, walk orderly to the exit, exit through the door, down the stairs, and out the building. If you have any questions, please raise your hand. We do not have any non-agenda items tonight, so I'd like to open the meeting up to early public comment.
Come on.
Second. Go ahead. Now, before we do that, just wait one second. I just want to introduce our Finance Department, Mike.
Yeah, we have our CFO, Heather, our Judge, Jasmine, and our Borough Auditor, Joe.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Choice. Sure.
For your ordinance, the Dr. Brezler, 2024, of 69, where you say that there don't be, if you're going to enter into a contract, such as a public hearing, for this sale developed by additional 12 acres and up to additional 72 four age restricted senior housing units and 3,200, 32,000 industrial offices. My question is, how many senior housing do you have not including this?
What you just asked me? There are 74 age restricted units.
Yeah.
Total.
This is going to be an additional 74 age restricted units. How many do you have prior to this?
We had none prior to that. We added the 74 into it, so it wouldn't affect the schools, and we want to have a place that seniors have an opportunity to go to.
So how many housing units are there don't be on this property not including this?
Not including this, including everything together with the senior housing.
Not including the senior housing.
Not including the senior, 426.
So we've got, you know, 320, 100 more than we're required to.
It was 426 for about a year, two years.
Yeah, that consent went two years ago to the courts.
The courts.
426, 72.
320 was over soon.
It was actually, it was actually 360 originally, 3.
Originally was that.
368, whatever it was, yeah.
And then we went back about two years ago in December, and we went to 426 affordable housing units.
Right.
426, 72.
Right, the affordable housing number did not change when we went to 426. It still was the 72. But now we want to add some place seniors to have enough, so we're going to a total of 500 units, with 74, the additional 74 will be age restricted.
Okay, and tax, now, this also said there could be additional, granted, 20,000 industrial offices. How many plus your current?
Zero. Zero.
That's the other 12 acres.
It's 320,000 square feet.
What were exactly that going to be?
Partially, if it's on the remaining 12 acres that we were keeping, they are buying that from us, and whatever portion doesn't fit on that will go on the existing property that they're originally.
Directly behind the salt shed at DPW.
The other question I have is on for, against number 14, 2024, that there, there's a section one that says, we need to develop a plan. A tax here too, as a delay, there is no tax here too.
After they introduce, I can send you the plan.
Thought that was published. You, we all got that, right?
You guys have counsel, haven't you?
Yeah, but that, we'll get, we'll give you a copy of it. Okay? Anyone else wishing to speak, seeing no emotion or close?
Uh huh.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Reporter committees?
I have the numbers for the, the main numbers from Gail, and they had 170 calls in May, year to date, 711. The county took 62 calls, they covered nine, we covered 97 calls and missed 11.89%. They had six mutual aid calls, 72 were Butler, Bloomingdale were 53, Kinnon 39. The month of June, they're going to be training the tactical EMS. They also have a, the Triborough First Aid Squad is presenting an evening mediumship, which is Friday, June 28, at 51 Morse Ave in Butler. And it's from five, the doors open at 5:30. Program starts from 6 to 7:30, $35 a ticket. And they'd like you to pay the tickets in advance for this fundraiser for them. For the Senior Center, their June calendar is up, and as usual, it's very busy with their aerobics. They have movies night, their book club, their walking club is still going on every Wednesday. Definitely encourage people to go online and look that up. And their upcoming special events, June 19th, it's Joey Ziza at Casa Bianca. And June 21st, they're going to Mammoth Raceway. June 27th is Paper Mill Playhouse, a play called Beautiful. And there's other events on their Turtle Bag Zoo trip, but that's not until September. For, just a reminder for fireworks, they're on June 29th at Walter T. Bergen, they start at 5. There, we have a couple of vendors that said, okay, and they're good to go. Kettle Corn, Kona Ice, Hot Dogs, House of Fudge, a Panada Lady, Angelo Co-Fire Pizza, another ice cream person, and a Arantini Ball, which is an Italian delicacy. Next, we have for BBYC, they have a lot of stuff online. You can still register for football, but they actually already have practices, warm-up starting. It's not actually practices, their practices don't start till August 3rd. But there is a dine, a Wendy's dine tonight at the Wendy's in Butler, it's from 5 to 8 p.m. They have summer workouts at Memorial Field, 6:30 to 7:30, and all kinds of other strength training and things that you can find at the BBYC online. Next, I have the library, yesterday was their meeting. Their next big event for the, their trustees is their Paint and Sip, which is not until November 3rd. But before then, they will be attending Celebration Day, September 21st, and Holiday Stroll. And of course, they have a lot of events online, including Read a Book with a Puppy, and maybe, there's always story time every day, and their book clubs. They started a Stephen King book club, it's starting July 1st. And they also have a murder book club, which is the third Tuesday of every month. And there's a cookbook club that's going on. The first time was May 22nd, July 24th is the next time, Wednesday at 6:30 p.m., where you could share recipes. And of course, the summer reading kickoff is June 27th, which for kids in town that are interested in doing this, there's actually going to be some prizes this year. So they're going to be advocating your book club, summer reading, with the incentive of a prize. That's all I have.
Okay.
Okay. As E. P. already stated, July 4th fireworks, Saturday, June 29th. I also wanted to take an opportunity to thank everyone that came out for Town and River Cleanup Day. It was a really successful event, so thank you to everybody. Also, the Townwide Garage Sale, Bree and Amy did a wonderful job. Thank you guys very much for getting everything together and making it a success. John and your crew did an excellent, excellent job at Sloan Park Fest, I want you to talk about that, but bravo to you guys, it really was lovely. I can't even, I couldn't get over how many people were walking through, it was great, so good job. We have absolutely nothing until Saturday, September 11th, and that is the 9/11 candlelight ceremony and walk. We take typically July and August off for public events. Then we also have, I'm going to remind everybody, as I always do, for recycling information, if you go to the main page, BloomingdaleNJ.net, and you click on the button that says recycling information, that is a wealth of information for everyone. It not only shows the couple days that we do the confidential shredding, that seems to be a hot topic on social media, but the other really nice thing that, and I don't think a lot of people realize, it shows all of the borough holidays, so when the DPW will not be picking up and when borough offices are closed. Borough offices are going to be closed July 4th, that is a Thursday. Let's see, and again, I, you know, I'm always going to tell everyone, please sign up for our Recycle Coach and our Reverse 911 Rave, they're on the main page, BloomingdaleNJ.net. Bottom, right-hand side, and they're, you know, again, a wealth of information, especially for Recycle Coach. It amazes me how many people I'm telling every day to use that, so that's another really great thing. One of the things that John and I have talked about many times, also on the website, which we will be doing some type of video on, is if you go to the main page, BloomingdaleNJ.net, there is also a button there for service requests. That's a great opportunity for people, residents, to go on there and request certain things instead of making a phone call. So let's say, for instance, you want, you have something large that needs to get picked up by the DPW, like that's a perfect place to put in your request. I'm trying to think if there's anything else. Oh, I'm sorry, June 18th, Butler, Kinnon Veterans Reeds Group is having a dine to donate at the Tastably British 163 Union Ave from 4 to 7:30. Excellent organization, you know, I really encourage everyone to go and attend. The Board of Health, we do have some ordinances that we will be amending and bring to the board for approval. One of them in particular is pretty exciting. I'll update everyone as that comes along, we're in the midst of it, kind of. That's it.
Yes, Sloan Park, I wish I could take the credit for it, but it would be wrong. It definitely belongs to a group of individuals led by Linda Bennett, including Sally Basili and Gail Lomell, who really do basically all the planning, all of the footwork, and really making it into what was a truly fantastic event. So I really want to send a special thank you to them, as well as to Mike Sondermeier for his help. He was out there with me at 12:30 directing vendors where to go in the hot sun.
The chaos.
And then, of course, the DPW, the police, the fire department, Bloomingdale Rec, all were big contributors to the event, and then I think it was the best Sloan Park Fest we've had yet. And I feel like I say that after every one, and that's because it's true. It just keeps getting better and better. Also, a special thank you to a lot of the Borough employees that I saw there. They were there with their families, right, enjoying it, it was nice to see. It was bringing everyone together, people that live in town and people that work here and people from other towns, too. So just a fantastic event. On the economic development front, we have a ribbon cutting this Friday at 4 o'clock. This is for DIVE, dive, it's a kind of like a 3D printing business. And then 3D Pets, where they do prosthetic limbs for animals. They're both located in the same place, same owners, so that's why we're doing two. It's on the corner of Main and Reeve, going back a ways, it's former Lorenz Transmission. Technically still is Brothers Auto Hunt, I suppose, they're in the back, so that's the location, Friday at 4 o'clock for that. And then, last, not least, I would like to thank on behalf of the Budget Committee, so on behalf of Rich and Ray and myself, thank you to Heather, Jasmine, our auditors as well. Joe, thank you to you, thank you to Mike, and all the department heads that helped us to put together this year's budget, to think through it, to make difficult decisions, and to arrive in where we are tonight. So thank you all for that.
One thing about the Sloan Park event and walking around talking to people, closing the street was huge. We got so many compliments about closing Hamburg Turnpike for that long period of time. And even though it kind of made a mess of traffic for everybody else, it made a great event, because people can walk back and forth, they didn't have to worry about traffic being stopped, buses going through, even though four buses went around there, you know. They were notified that we're doing this to change our routes, well, they didn't, which is okay. But a great idea doing that, and a lot of compliments for that, fans are great. And Bloomingdale Rec, Matt, Sacon, Aaron, worked and played with kids the whole time. They had so many different games going on for the kids and kept them all occupied, and they had a blast. It was just, you know, it was great. And the Police Department had also a bunch of toys that the kids can play with and taking pictures in a frame. You'll see that, that's all on Facebook or whatever, but kudos to everybody that was involved in that, and it was a great day. I mean, long for you guys, but it was a nice event, so. Anybody down there?
I'll expand upon it, just for a couple extra comments. Obviously, they did a great job, compliments to John, the team, and everybody else on Sloan Park Day. I know the Environmental Commission was there as well, really playing with the kids, having a great time. They brought out microscopes and set up a little science lab, so overall, just awesome event for our town. But to expand upon the rec, summer camp is starting shortly. I encourage anyone who's going to enroll, try and enroll this week, price will increase next week, so get your enrollment in early, save yourself a couple bucks, and that's about it.
Good. Rich, anything? No. There you go. Mike?
Nothing. My man.
Great.
Nothing to report, thank you.
Nothing was even.
Okay. I think we pushed on pretty much everything that's going on with that. All right. Okay, item eight, Resolution Number 2024-6 dot 1, a Consent Agenda. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Some move.
Rich and.
Rich and Ray? Okay. Roll call, please.
Catalano?
Yes.
De La Riva?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Okay. Item nine, Municipal Budget, Second Final Reading and Public Hearing, Ordinance Number 10-2024, Index Rate Cap Bank Ordinance, Public Notice Statement, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this ordinance was posted in the municipal building, published in the Herald News, and copies were made available to the public, so that a motion may be made that it be read by title.
Do you have a motion to read by title? Some move. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Borough Bloomingdale, calendar year 2024, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cash cap bank, sorry, NJSA 40A, semicolon, 4 dash 45 point 14.
Okay. Have a motion to open a public hearing.
Some move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to come up? Seeing no one, a motion to close? Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for adoption.
Some move.
Second. Roll call.
De La Riva?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Item B, Budget Presentation, Public Hearing Adoption for the 2024 Municipal Budget. Yes, we'll do the presentation, okay. All right, Mike, turn it over to you guys.
Yep.
Why is this number?
Hi, thank you, as Mike had introduced earlier, I am Jasmine, I am the Municipal Administrator, and will be giving the presentation on behalf of the Finance Department today.
If we can get this adapted.
Jasmine, can you pull the mic next to you?
Yes.
Your mic?
Either way.
There you go.
Is this good?
Yes.
Okay. No problem. I'm sure everybody can see. Apologies, I did not, thank you.
I had tried to.
Okay, so these are the discussion points for this presentation this year. We're going to be discussing our goals when putting together the budget document. We're going to be discussing some of the budget challenges that we face this year. We're going to be talking about the tax breakdown, our year-to-year overall expenditures and revenues, as well as our capital projects and expenditures. So every year, we have roughly about the same goals. We want to always achieve a budget, a balanced budget. This is primarily to be in compliance with the New Jersey State statute. We are also interested in looking for and establishing additional streams of revenue and to reduce our debt. Also, alongside New Jersey statute and local finance notices, we are also seeking to continuously fund our accumulated expenses. The budget challenges for 2024. This year, we did have to manage a decrease in revenue due to some terminations of our shared service agreements. We also were faced with the unavailability of additional funds that were previously given to us under the Local Finance Recovery Program during COVID. There has also been a decrease in state aid and grants this year, alongside an increase in vendor costs, as well as some earlier employment retirements that we were not anticipating. What does this mean in general? It does unfortunately mean an increase in taxes. This year, this is the breakdown of where your tax dollars are going. 55% of all taxes collected this year are going towards your schools. 1% is going to the library, 19% is going to the county taxes, 1% is going to county open space, and 24% is going to our municipal operations. This is a multi-year revenue review. I wanted to showcase where revenues have been trending for the last four years. 2021, we were still in the midst of COVID. As you can see, in '22, we had a very generous leap in revenue that is attributed to the local recovery fiscal funds, as well as additional shared services that we had entered into that year. '23, there was a slight modest increase from the prior year, and this year, there is approximately a 1.5% decrease in overall anticipated revenue.
We, in a hundred percent stop at that one, we've taken in more revenue with our shared services.
Correct.
But the 400,000 that we did not get this year of COVID is why that's a decrease.
Correct. That is correct.
That's taken another revenue in the past.
Absolutely. Similarly, we're doing a multi-year review of our expenditures. There has been a modest increase, however, from the previous year to this year, there has been a less than 1% increase in our overall expenditures this year. This is the percentage of total expenditure, so what do our expenditures make up this year? 69% make up other expenditures. The remaining are statutory expenditures, which includes our pension payments for police and fire and other employees, as well as our DCRP and unemployment obligations make up 12%. Our insurance, which includes general liability, workman's compensation, health insurance, and the likes are 11%. And then our overall municipal debt makes up about 8% of our total expenditures.
Just, I just should talk about some of our capital improvement projects that we've had going on and ones that are planned, hopefully this year or early next. We've talked about the senior building, that's currently going on now. They're looking for the shed to be delivered sometime mid-July now. Pad is drafted, ready to go. We received a survey from members, we received $60,000 from a CDVG grant from the county to offset the cost of that building. Orchard and Wallace is 99% done, we're in a punchless phase right now. They got a couple of signs they have to put up, and then we just did the, that you approved last meeting with the pavement sample. So that'll be wrapped up. That one, again, from the DOT, we received about $275,000. Salt shed, they are currently there working, building shed for the footings this week. That one is fully funded, as you see the last one's there, that is, we've not got any grant from that, that is fully funded bond from the municipality, because we had a, it was declared, we had to, from our engineer, that the previous salt shed was failing. Future projects that we were talking about, so Oakwood Playground, that's a big one coming up hopefully this year. We know we received 450,000 from Open Space Grant, two different grants, one for two, one for 250 from the county. We have gotten word that we have been recommended to receive 750,000 from the Jakes Law Grant that we applied for. As soon as that gets approved, which we're hearing from the Millennium that does our grant writing, that we're 99% sure we're going to get that. Once we hear that, get that word that we received it, we'll start that project. We'll demo the old one and put the new playground in. Catherine and Bailey, that's one we put on, it's on tonight for a second hearing for the ordinance. That one, we received $416,000 from a DOT grant, and the project's going to be roughly, maybe $700,000, because again, we're not doing the sidewalk tonight, road, we're only doing curbs and paving on those two roads.
And drainage.
And drainage, yep. And in Elm, that one, we applied, that was a, last year, we grant we applied for, which we received 375,000 for from the DOT. That one will be the next street for drainage and water and obviously curbs and pavement. That'll be a 2025 project. That'll probably, I'd imagine, it'd be somewhere, I would think, maybe helping out in the million, 1.2 million dollar range, kind of like Orchard and.
Yeah, yeah.
Could put a bit of work there.
Well, we found those on, in Elm, we believe there's two water mains running down that street. Our goal is to move over to one 10-inch water main that's there. So that'll take all the services, but in any project we do, we do go in and make all the curb stop changes. We upgrade all them, and that's also part of our lead pipe.
Yes.
Investigation, which we have to do X amount a year, so that will help us there.
Hopefully, we fix some of the drainage up there, because we have a.
We have a flooding issue up there, so we know there's drainage problems up there, which we're trying to figure out how to resolve to get the water to flow freely to Oakwood Lake. So that's, that'll be one of our bigger projects in 2025, right?
Yes, yep. And that's on the senior center floor. Again, if you recall, we had two different CDVG grants we got that we had them re-appropriated the county for us. So we currently have $150,000 in grant money. And we also applied this year, CDVG, we'll hear sometime in September, October, what we got to put towards it as well, to hopefully start that project either late this year or early next in 2025. Wolfie Bergen Exercise, but this one we just heard about. This is the one we applied for a grant about, maybe about two months ago. We just heard we received $65,000. We don't think the project's going to come in at that, it'll probably be well below that, so that'll be a fully funded by the grant, which is a good thing for us. And then the De Lazier Playground, that's one we applied for, we have not heard, that was a, this year's Open Space Grant with the county. We applied for $200,000, and we'll hear about that one in the same timeframe, the CDVG, so September, October timeframe. Those are capital improvement projects we have on our radar right now that are going and will be going in the near future.
We have additional capital expenditures that we would like to make, some that are required by state statute and by other governing bodies, like our body cameras for a police department and our alcohol test. And there are others that are kind of wish list items that would be beneficial to us to eventually fund either via ordinance with bond or fully fund.
Yeah, of that, I think Jasmine and I, Heather sat down, there's two of those we can fully fund. We have money that we can do without bonding money for. That would be the alcohol test for the police and the gas boy upgrades for the software for the DPW. The rest, the body cameras, the stormwater management, fencing and turnout here would have to be some type of a bond. We have to learn it together and then bond that money this year. We have to learn it together and then bond that money this year to try and get those things. Cameras have to be done, so we don't have to get 125,000 for that.
That's mandatory.
That is all for today, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Mike, what's Gasboy?
Gasboy is the, our gas and diesel tanks. And we have a software that tracks when, because we also sell it to Pompin and Pompin Board of Education and our Board of Education. So the software upgrades allows us to track that. They don't upgrade, it's falling behind and it's.
It's old.
It's old.
Yeah. It's outdated.
Yeah.
We upgraded, we put money into, maybe two years ago, we did $40,000 to gas boy to update the tanks and to reseal them and paint them. It's a double wall tank. They did something to maintain it for the next 20 years. And now we gotta do the software. The software has to be upgraded, yep.
It just tracks everybody that goes down and gets gas, whether it be.
All of us.
Pompin, all of us, fire police, anybody that has a burrow.
Fire department, police, they all come in, it's all.
So we know who's using what, when and when they're in the DPW.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Thank you, Jasmine.
You're welcome.
Stick around.
I'll stick around for questions.
Yeah, there'll be questions, I'm sure. Okay, item C, Public Hearing Adoption for 2024 Municipal Budget. Public Notice Statement, please.
Mayor, this is the time fixed for the public hearing on the municipal budget and tax resolution for 2024. The budget was approved by the governing body on May 7th, 2024, and was advertised as required by law on May 14th, 2024, together with notice of hearing for this time.
Okay, adoption of resolution number 2024-6 dot 7, read budget by title. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. I can do all the paper?
This is your roll call.
Okay, roll call.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
No.
Yasi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Delariva?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, before opening this hearing, I wish to outline the procedure. Each person desired to be heard will rise and give his or her name and address before speaking. I will recognize one speaker at a time in order of, in order of rising as nearly as I can determine. Addresses, address all questions to the chair. Where necessary, they will be referred to individual members of the governing body or the municipal officials. Questions must be combined slowly to the municipal budget before us. School or county matters are not proper subjects for this hearing and cannot be discussed or answered here tonight. Okay, have a motion, open up public hearing. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to come up, please come up. Come on, Linda.
Jimmy?
Sure.
I asked him a question at the last meeting and I just wanted to get your responses.
Okay.
For the assessment of taxes that went down, I'm just being bad on 27 thousand.
Page, John.
Page, please.
What page, John?
May I answer that?
Sure.
Okay, so the office previously had a full-time tax assessor clerk, as well as a part-time tax assessor. We no longer have a full-time tax assessor clerk. That position is vacant. We have an assistant to the CFO that is currently helping the tax assessor on a part-time basis. So there was a decrease in that salary.
One person doing two rolls.
Correct.
I had a question about the salary wages for the police. I'm looking at a purity of 1,575,000. And I subsequently informed that I was, because of 421,866.
The COVID money?
COVID money. But I just wanted to make a comment. The whole law is that when I ask a question that couldn't be answered, it's a little, it's a challenge to me to put it. You're presenting a budget that's already going to prove you died and nobody can tell me why that happened.
We reduced the budget.
We didn't approve it.
We still haven't approved it yet.
And we knew the answer, just didn't want to jump in and talk because all the questions go there. All the answers come from there. We're not supposed to jump in and throw out answers.
That's not necessarily true, you're not supposed to jump in.
You can believe what you like to believe. Let's just, okay.
Okay, and I also question why for the street, the road repairs.
Can you give us the page, just because I'm making sure I'm following? Thank you.
Road repairs and maintenance, the salary wages went down to 400, 400. And the salary wages for the trash removal also went down. I understand the trash removal went down. But my question was that because the shared service we have were just for trash removal, not for the roads and repairs, why would that come down? It's like the sounds of being moved around.
Good.
Hi, so part of the shared service with the other towns, in addition to solid waste, it also includes street sweeping, vegetative waste, and other things that are accounted for for our laborers in the streets and road salary. So this year, we're receiving the full amount of our shared service. So we're able to move some of that salary to the shared services. Whereas last year, we started a little behind and so we weren't able to properly allocate for that.
But we've always had the streets that we've been, when we often buy the best cake of rice.
Yes, but we had two additional.
We added street sweeping.
We added Oakland.
Oakland.
Forty, forty thousand dollars and we added one of you vegetative waste.
And the employee who helped is got up by over 200,000. And is that due to the new employees?
I believe that's due to increases in insurance.
So it's partially due to employees, partially just an increase in rates.
What's the point you know of this because it's due to the employee persons? Is it due to?
I don't have that information, but I can get that for you.
Plus, we have employees that are getting married, having kids.
Oh, family plans.
Family plans, I'm, there's.
A lot of young people that are, yeah.
Street 17, webmaster went up from 59 to 72.
We redid our whole website.
If you already did it, I mean, I'd like to.
But it is, we still have to maintain it. I mean.
What else included, webmaster?
So including in our webmaster is also our IT professional. So we have a vendor that is in charge of all of our cybersecurity. There's been an increase in cost via our cyber drift. And so we were required to add additional services to our previous agreement to ensure that we're compliant with the state requirements.
With a new statutes put out there that require this?
Are there statutes?
With this new law that requires.
So we have to comply with our insurance policies, Jeff, because it's tied to some reimbursements that we can potentially get in the future. And so we want to make sure, excuse me?
Okay, and it also helps our deductible.
Yes, and so we want to make sure that we are as compliant as possible. But also it safeguards us against potential ransomware, which would cost us much more money in insurance payout than paying a vendor to make sure that we're properly covered.
Do you want me to speak to that one?
You can.
No, I was just going to say, because that is actually kind of my corporate thing in these days. Just because, I mean, I can just cite, I won't cite them because it's embarrassing. But I know several major companies who have had cyber attacks and they've had this, that and the. You know, they, they wound up spending millions of dollars in, like, you know, cryptocurrency just to get their information back. The amount of hacking and the amount of counterintelligence that has to be done on a security standpoint is astronomical these days. I guess it's good for me because it helps pay my salary, but, you know, it's just going to keep growing just because it's, you know, it's always a cat and mouse game. You know, people are constantly blocking one thing and then finding something else that you then have to walk in. Yeah, it's just going to be a mess. I mean, I'm mainly in the backup realm and they figured out, you know, because it used to be for years, people would say, well, we don't care. We'll just restore our backups, you know, from two days ago or whatever. But then they figured out that the best thing to do is to break in and erase all your backups. So, you know, like I said, they just keep going wider and wider. You just have to sort of come up with more and more tougher measures. It's, it's really a race.
Okay, thank you. Street 17A, contingency, your increase to from 250,000?
Correct. And that, as I told you, we took from the library, the line, because that's where they put contingency in the past. So we just added it where it belongs, in the contingency line that's in the budget.
Street 27, our interest that we're paying on our bonds and notes is insignificant. And we were told as a taxpayer, when we had gotten this pilot program that was going to pay off all our debt, that that never happened. Now we're going to go into another pilot program. And what are we going to use that addition of, we're going to pay off any debt and just continue kicking it down the road.
Well, first, we have to sign a pilot program. Okay, they have to go into contract there. But the pilot program that you're talking about helps set, offset our taxes for the past since it's been in, how long has it been there?
Ten years.
Ten years and growing at 2%. So that's helping keep our taxes, I'll call it, almost stable or stabilized. All right, with very little increase. So it is keeping the taxpayer cost down. So that, that pilot goes into the general fund. We do pay some debt down year to year, correctly.
Oh, we do. Hundred percent, you pay debt down, but every year we add debt also because we have capital projects that have to be done.
We have to do that. I mean, we just bought, we just bonded for what, two and a half million dollars with the fire trucks that we have, we're going to have to pay off. Once these new pilots are in place, then we're going to have to work with our finance department and see how that money is best allocated to help the taxpayer. Whether it's added right into our regular budget every year and come in as low as possible in taxes, pay off our debt, or buy equipment that we need without bonding anymore, which we've done a pretty good job in the past three years, two, two or three years, buying trucks that we no longer pay, they're gone and we're still paying for them. We're just buying them outright. So I believe.
You're not buying that, right? You're a capitalist, so you still owe that.
Yeah, but we're not paying it for 30 years, they're paid off in three years, so seven years, whatever that is. All right, so you're not paying it for 30 years.
Prince, that's not a bond.
No.
It's a different type.
That's just debt. It's debt. It's an expenditure.
Doesn't get counted towards the same equation.
It's debt. If you can, if you were critical, then you'd want to want, there's still debt.
I'm just talking about accounting treatments.
I love accounting.
Yeah, so then you understand what I'm saying.
So, so once we get the development and everything and a contract signed and all that stuff that we have to do, and then we start getting money, come here, we can't count money we don't have, I just don't believe in it. So once it comes, then this body, whoever's up here, will have to make a decision where that money is going to go and be allocated and work with our finance department and figure out the best way to, to use that money to utilize and help the taxpayer. That's what it's all about.
Okay, closing my hope, you don't pay us this money because I don't think the taxpayers will afford this kind of increase this, at this time.
Well, nobody can afford a tax increase at any time.
But now, see, for us, we're losing business, people are having a hard time, I just think it's shameful to do that.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, have a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Three, you're up.
Mayor, I'll read section two of the municipal budget. So be resolved by the council members of the borough of Bloomingdale County to say that the budget herein before set forth is hereby adopted and shall constitute an appropriation for the purposes stated of the sum therein. The sum therein set forth as appropriations and authorization of the amount of $8,216,697.17 for municipal purposes, $182,831 for open space recreation, farmland, and historic preservation trust fund levy, $389,632 for minimum library tax.
Okay. Okay, resolution number 2024-6 dot 8, adoption of the 2024 Municipal Budget. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Roll call, please.
John?
Yes.
Might I say something?
No, sure.
I just want to say, I mean, I've been on the budget committee, you know, all 11 years, or 12 years. I've lost track because I missed one. And this has probably been one of the most difficult budgets we've ever had. Certainly, the loss of COVID money, other grants, you know, there were a lot of things going on. You know, am I happy with this budget? No, I'm not happy with this budget. Obviously, I would rather pay less and get more, just like every other human being. But, you know, I think it's kind of the best we can do in the situation we have. And I would certainly like to echo the thanks to the finance people who guided us along here. Just because I know it was a very, very tough road that they had to travel to get to this point. So just wanted to say that, thank you.
I'd also like to really thank the finance department and really the budget committee as well. I mean, this is a tough job. I give everyone a lot of credit. This wasn't incredibly tough here, and as I asked questions along the way, you know, I was a tad surprised, but, but I, surprised and not surprised. But it really is a very difficult position that everyone is in to make these decisions for the, all of the residents. But to remind everyone that we're residents too. We don't, we don't like this. Like, it's not, you know, I don't want to see anybody's taxes. I'm sorry?
Nobody wants to pay more.
Nobody wants to pay more. I'm in the same position that everyone else is up on this day, and it's not a good position to be in when you have to tell a resident that their taxes are going to be up. And, you know, when I got to go home and tell my husband to. Like, you're like, sorry. So, but really, everyone did really an excellent job and they deserve a lot of credit because this is not an easy position. And I'll tell you something, I don't want to be in your position. I don't, these guys know numbers like there's no tomorrow. And it's impressive to watch. And thank you very much. And one last, one last thing is that I would also really encourage people, when you look at Jasmine's graph, where a lot of our money is going. And a lot of our money is going to the school system.
Go ahead, I just want to, I have a comparison. I just put my tax bill here tonight.
Okay, wonderful. But what I find is.
He's going to complain about its own taxes.
Complain to myself.
But what I do find is people come to us all the time and they say, you know, why are my taxes going up? And I can answer some of those questions, but go to a school board meeting too. Ask the questions there. That's what, 53% Jasmine? 55, I'm sorry, this year, 55%. Nobody ever goes up there. Nobody ever asks any questions. And I ask people that are on the board, I'm like, does anybody show up and ask? They're like, no. So I really encourage everyone, you want to know where 55% of your taxes are going, ask them as well. And please ask us, that's what we're here for. So, again, thank you to everyone that worked so hard on this. Appreciate that.
I'll echo, because I always make the comparison and having conversations with Council President John and the rest of the budget committee. No one wants to sit in this position and have to charge any of our residents more money for the resources that they get. But I think that we should be commended. While we're all saying that it's a challenge to increase, you take a look at what they've done versus what's happening in the public sector day to day with inflation and with the cost of goods and services that you're receiving, whether it's a gallon of milk or a cup of coffee, as I know. The bottom line is the increase that they're putting forward in your taxes is substantially less than the increase that you're seeing in your day-to-day operation. And while that is tough to swallow because the costs have increased everywhere, we're doing everything we can to make ours the smallest possible.
doing everything we can to make ours the smallest possible. And I think that's what makes this budget a success, so while it's a tough pill to swallow, it is still a strong budget, and I'm happy that these guys did the job that they did.
And one more thing I want to add as well, sorry, is everyone should also be commended for bringing in all these new shared services that are offsetting a lot of our expenses, and if we didn't have some of that, we'd be in a sad state. So, you know, Mike Sondermeyer, you know, John, some of our departments, good for you, and keep going, because they deserve the credit as well, and I'm sorry I didn't say that earlier.
I actually have a question, or just a statement. I can't be happy about it, and I did ask Mike some questions, and I have been to school board meetings, and I know that, you know, we have the two, you know, schools that we do have-
Three.
Three, and a lot of children are opting, because we don't have a high school, whatever, they're opting not to go to, you know, they could go wherever they want, because we don't have the high school, and I just feel that where, and, you know, we just sold lands that, you know, for, like, we gave, like, for some reason, like, I feel like we gave away some land-
What land is that?
The Glade project, and I understand with the road-
There's a history, right, there's-
There is a history.
Before we go into any more, we're talking about the budget, so I don't want to go into Glade Road, but there's a little history behind Glade Road that I don't want to go into here.
It just feels like we're kind of falling short as far as-
We also just voted to rescind the consent agenda. Well, not rescind it, but forfeit a route.
No, that's-
No, that's a road opening permit.
My bad, my bad, forgot about that.
You know, we're focusing, putting money in some places and not in other places, and so I understand you guys are working hard, and I commend that as well, but, you know, our taxes are, you know-
Well, let me just, I'll give you, like I said before, before we vote on this, we're going to do that shortly, I'm going to do a comparison, I put my taxes down, okay? Two thousand and twenty, school tax was six thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars, right? Two thousand and twenty-three, my school tax is seventy-two hundred and eighteen dollars, pretty big increase in a few years. County tax went up a little bit. Municipal tax, two thousand and twenty, my taxes were thirty-one, twenty-one. Two thousand and twenty-three is thirty-one, sixty-four, forty-dollar increase in four years. That's pretty darn good for this body to keep the municipal side of the taxes at that, that's pretty good, that just is, and anybody can see, I'll show anybody, all right? So we're doing, we, and that's everybody here, and the passive people here, since we've been involved, trying to do the best we can and keep taxes as low as we can. So I think forty dollars in four years, that's pretty darn good. County went up like thirty dollars in four years. School went up six hundred dollars, and that's just me. I never used the schools, my kids never went there. But it is what it is. And I understand education is very important and all that stuff, so I understand that. They had the biggest part of our budget, and that's up to them to maintain our budget. I'm not beating them up, they're doing it the best they can, that's their job. But our job here is to make sure we're controlling the money on the municipal side, and I believe we have, we have, with a forty-dollar increase in four years, that's pretty darn good. So, and I'm not the average house, so it's really not too bad. Okay.
John, can I say one more thing?
You only have one shot.
Okay, well, I did want to say I appreciate what Councilwoman Humpy's coming up and asking questions.
Just nothing, I think it's great.
Yes, I mean, because to the point, you know, the Councilwoman, what John said before, was, it's true, at least you're here, you're asking questions, and I think that keeps us, you know, focused more.
Absolutely, I respect you.
Yes, so I just want to say, I don't always enjoy the questions, but I do appreciate them.
I mean, I get phone calls, I get emails, questioning stuff, and I answer as quick as I can, and if I can't have the answer, I go to Mike, or I go to John, I go wherever I need to get the answer from. It's, sometimes the questions are hard, but sometimes you just got to tell it the way it is, it is what it is. So, okay. Okay, any other question before we, okay, none? Roll call, please.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
No.
Yazdi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Delariva?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, where am I? Item ten.
You guys don't need to say you don't want out.
Yeah.
Yes.
You guys can slither out, but Joe, I appreciate you coming out, thank you. Thank you very much, and Heather, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Okay, pending business, second final reading of public hearing, bond ordinance, twelve dash two thousand and twenty-four, reconstruction of Catherine Street and Bailey Avenue, public minister's statement, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this ordinance was posted in the municipal building, published in the Herald News, and copies were made available to the public so that a motion may be made that it be read by title.
Kevin, a motion to read by title.
Come on. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to recuse myself from this, right, I'm just going to step outside until it's done. Okay.
You refuse yourself?
From the whole thing, right, it's, I live on Bailey, so-
Yes.
You can stay there, you don't have to.
Yeah, you can just abstain.
I just don't want anyone to- You can step out, do what you think you should do.
You can do whatever you want to do, you can abstain.
Step out, wait. That's fine, makes sense.
Bond ordinance providing for the reconstruction of Catherine Street and Bailey Avenue by and in the borough of Bloomingdale and the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey, appropriating eight hundred and five thousand therefore inclusive of a state of New Jersey, New Jersey Department of Transportation grant in the amount of four hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and thirty, and authorizing the issuance of one hundred and eight thousand in bonds or notes of the borough to finance the cost thereof.
Okay. Kevin, motion to open public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to come up?
Um, the budget presentation, I heard they weren't putting sidewalks on Catherine and Bailey, how come?
We don't feel that it's necessary, we talked to some, actually, I wanted to remove them for some people, so we did a kind of a survey over there, and some people want them, some people don't. We don't feel that the sidewalks are in that bad a shape that we should assess them and rip them out.
So does everybody have sidewalks there?
If, there are sidewalks that really go to nowhere.
Sidewalks.
All right, the sidewalks come from the Warren Ave side, Elizabeth Street side, and they go halfway down-
Mighty.
Catherine, they go, do you know where Warren Matthews lives?
Yes.
Right, they go to his house, that's where it stops, because originally, that's the old side of Catherine Street, the other from there up is new, they never put sidewalks. So it doesn't make sense to run them all the way down, we're just, we're just going to do what we have the grant money for, which is the-
Paving and curbs.
Curbs and the paving, and we're doing some drainage, because we do at times have flooding issues over there.
This was a question I had a long conversation with Mike about, I walked out there and checked it all out, and I pushed, because I was like, wait a second, I'd love to have Bloomingdale be a walking town, but when you get out there and take a look at what exists on Catherine and Bailey now, what the budget allowed us to do on these projects, and then not having replaced only the sidewalks that exist, and not having them continue on throughout the remainder, didn't make sense, right?
So we're starting all the already closed in for like residents, not paying for like ten?
No, so you're only going to assess the six homes that currently have them, and those sidewalks don't lead to continuous sidewalks on the rest, that have finished curving already and walkways to the street.
Like, what, we did four, I think we reported streets, that only, some of the houses had sidewalks, some of them didn't, and because some did, did everybody?
So they-
They go to sidewalks and sidewalks.
They connected sidewalks, sidewalks, gap sidewalks. If you would go to the other side, and there was only two homes on Catherine that didn't have, I would have pushed very, very heavily, but it dead ends, and then the entire remainder of the street no longer has them, and the same holds true on Bailey all the way down to-
There's, the history of Bailey Ave, because obviously I lived there, is when I moved in, there was no curbing, there was no road, there was no water, all right? So the projects in past councils, they put water, and then they paved and put curbing in. Catherine Street is an extra wide street compared to your street or my street, so the sidewalks are there. I believe, I don't really particularly care for sidewalks, personal opinion, because, you know, you have to, you got to show them, you got to maintain them, and if they go bad, you have to rip them out and put them, put them, but there's several people on Catherine Street that already did their sidewalks, so you don't want to come in and, you know, they paid a lot of money for it, but I can tell you, I put a level on some of them, they don't form to DOT spec, so if you start taking them out, those people are going to have to pay for it again. I just don't feel that's really right, to do that.
I reviewed, I reviewed them as well, I went to the site as well, and to me, it made no sense to put in sidewalks to nowhere. Like, I was like, this is-
You walk off and you get in the street, so-
If the budget, if the budget-
Yeah, well, there's been other areas, there's been other areas that we did, just paving, I can tell you, Clark Street, Walter Drive, Walter Court-
Jeffrey Drive.
Jeffrey Drive, Roy Ave, to be honest with you, Roy Ave, I walked at the other day, somebody's sidewalk is asphalt, so if we ever did that again, we would probably make that an assessment project, because it's needed, and it does go somewhere, it goes out to Glenwell Ave, but it just didn't make sense to put an extra burden on people when they really decide what's going nowhere. Okay? We are probably going to do the aprons to-
The ones that we crack up.
Yeah, the ones we have to make it work, because some of the aprons are out of tilt, and if we mill and pave, we don't want people bottoming it out, so we will be doing some concrete work over there for that. Okay? Okay, Kevin, motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other questions from the council? Motion for adoption.
So move. Second.
Roll call.
Okay, I just have a question, is there another, as far as, like, in the capacity of what's coming next, like, if you're going to do this, like, is there another one in sight that's worse off, or this is the worst of them?
When you apply for a grant for those streets, you have to, when you apply for that, you have to be, you have to name the streets that you're doing, or the DOT won't do anything. So when we apply for this grant, we did Catherine and Bailey, for paving and curving.
And you have two years to award the project, and that award date is November of this year, has to be awarded to a contractor.
Just like next year, we got, we got three hundred and some thousand for An and Al, that will be our next big project. This year, we didn't apply for, right, we didn't apply for-
You can't, you can't take, what the mayor said, you can't take this money that we got from DOT, this four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars-
And move it.
To Greeland Ave, that has a bunch of potholes in it, you just can't move it, it's dedicated to the street you went for, the grant from.
Yeah, we've done, probably now, I would say seventy-five percent of the roads in town we've known paved or did upgrades to. We're getting close to the point where it was a ten-year plan, where this all started. Right now, half of Bailey Ave is rippled, because it hasn't been done twenty-some years. Catherine Street, we did water lines down on, between Elizabeth and Warren, which we completed a loop, we took out two-inch galvanized pipe, part of our lead pipe program, and we ran new water lines there. So if you drive over, you'll see it's all ripped up, and it just passed. So we thought that would be a perfect place to do Catherine Street.
And it's definitely a thoroughfare for kids and walking to school and to quick checks, so.
It's a quick, it's a cut through to get to Hamlet Turnpike.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Delariva?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
For the record, Graziano and Yazdi stepped out, so I'm considering them as recusing from the vote.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Ray?
Do you want me to go first?
I keep looking for that clock.
They are coming.
Okay. No, I know that, but my eyes, just, for so many years, I've just been looking up there, to see a screw.
Can I just put a sign up that says time to adjourn?
Okay, new business, adoption of resolution two thousand and twenty-four, six dot nine, authorizing the application of Passaic County Superior Court to amend the Affordable Housing Consent Order as it relates to blocks fifty-one oh five and lot fourteen dot oh one. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Roll call.
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Delariva?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Okay. Item B, introduction of ordinance number thirteen dash two thousand and twenty-four, chapter two dash eighty, municipal fees, overnight parking permits. Do I have a motion to read by title?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance of the borough of Bloomingdale and the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey, amending chapter two, administration, article eight, policies and procedures, section two dash eighty, fees charged for municipal services of the code of the borough of Bloomingdale.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, second and final reading will be on June twenty-fifth.
Items, you good?
Yeah, June twenty-fifth.
Item C, introduction of ordinance number fourteen dash two thousand and twenty-four, adopting redevelopment plan, block fifty-one oh five, lot fourteen dot oh one, fifty-three, fifty-five, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, and sixty-one. Do I have a motion to read by title?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. An ordinance of the borough of Bloomingdale, county of Passaic, state of New Jersey, adopting the redevelopment plan for block fifty-one oh five, lots fourteen point oh one, fifty-three, fifty-five, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, and sixty-one. Mr. Mayor, second and final reading can be on August twentieth, as this ordinance will be referred to the planning board.
Okay. Kevin, motion, open up late public comment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're good, no more questions, you're good? All right. Seeing no one else, do I have a motion to close late public comment?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we do not have anything for executive session, our next meeting will be June twenty-fifth, seven o'clock, and then July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, for our July meeting. Remember, July and August, we have one meeting each month, okay?
And we forgot to say, congrats to the mayor for being your first time grant parent. Congratulations.
And it's not a dog, so this is really, I do appreciate that, it's a really neat experience, neat experience. It's great to see my son going through what I went through. Kevin, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.